I pledge to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Committee member Moran will be participating tonight's meeting remotely. Roll call, please.
Mr. Nakow, Mr. Getchea.
Yeah.
Mr. Bahu.
Here.
Mr. Moran.
Yeah.
Mr. Richardson.
Here.
Mr. Hogan. Mr. Lemay. Mr. Sheen.
Here. Uh, Mr. Richardson, anybody signed up for public appearance?
Negative.
Thank you, sir. Are there any school committee communications? Hearing none. Uh, our student representative is not here tonight. He believes at a sporting event and everybody has his notes in front of him. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of December 19th?
So moved.
Questions, comments, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Do I have a motion to read, do I have a motion to waive the reading of the warrant?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, unanimous. Do I have a motion to approve the expenditures of $5,851,030.95?
Motion.
Second. Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, unanimous. Uh, no report at the general counsel. Madam Superintendent, the floor is yours.
Sure. Thank you. Uh, the first item on my agenda this evening is I would, I would like to recognize and congratulate two of our students and I'd like to ask them both to come forward. First is Madison Coza. Madison is a senior in our information technology program and Nicholas Maras. Nicholas is a senior in our C- uh, CAD program. And each of these students has been selected as the 2025 U.S. Presidential Scholar nominees in the career technical education category. This remarkable achievement is a testament to their hard work, dedication, and the excellence that they have demonstrated throughout their academic and career technical education. Being chosen from a highly competitive pool of candidates across the state is a tremendous honor and we are incredibly proud of both of them. We appreciate that they have represented Greater Little Technical High School so admirably and for admiring excellence in our core, embodying excellence in our core values. We look forward to seeing all the great things that each of them will do in the future and with the hope that they continue to achieve as they are doing now. I would like to invite each of them individually and first I'd like to invite Madison to come up to present her with the certificate of recognition and to congratulate her for such a prestigious achievement. And next I'd like to invite Nicholas Maras up to present him with his certificate of recognition of his amazing achievement. Thank you to both of you. And we are very proud of you. We know, we'll be looking forward to see all the achievements that the future brings to both of you. So thank you both for coming today.
Congratulations, guys.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
The next item on my agenda is I would like to inform the committee that Greater Little Technical High School was awarded a $5,000 career and technical education grant to be used for purchasing supplies for the automotive technology shop for the after-dawn program. Next on my agenda, I'd be asking for the committee's approval to accept a donation of a 1996 Chevrolet Camaro convertible with a valued cost of $500 from a local community member, Mr. Charles Barros. The vehicle will be used in the automotive technology program for educational training and once completed disposed of in such a manner that the components cannot be used or sold. So I'll be looking for the approval.
Motion to approve.
Second. Questions, comments, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous.
Just like to thank Mr. Barros for his donation to Greater Little Technical High School. We are appreciative of that donation. The next is our cooperative education report. The report you were provided in your packets indicates that 243 senior students are participating in our cooperative education program. As of the end of December, I'm happy always to report that currently we have 249 senior students uh, out of 562 participating in cooperative education, which is 44% of the class of 2025. Uh, our juniors will be going out in February. Uh, a copy of the report again is in your packet and we'd like to thank Stacy Bazanson and Brian Jones and all of our technical instructors for the support that they give to our students so that they're able to go out and honk, hoop and practice their technical skills. The next item on the agenda, I would like to invite up the assistant superintendent and principal, Mr. Michael Barton, to join us to provide information regarding the out-of-state travel request, which we will need a committee approval for.
So, uh, good evening. Uh, the out-of-state travel request pertains to the competition dance team to attend the national dance team championship in Orlando, Florida from January 31st to February 2nd. Uh, the total cost of the trip is $18,804.88. Uh, the dance team raised $7,782.80, which includes a donation from the parent organization. So the total cost of the district is $11,022.8. Uh, with me tonight is Coach Fabrez, as well as two dancers who will be competing, Aleah Nunez and Luciana Afanador Ferro, uh, here to talk a little bit more about this exciting opportunity. So.
Awesome.
Hello.
Hi.
My name is Nicholas Fabrez. I've been teaching here for 29 years. I'm also the head varsity dance team coach. Many of you know me also as being the senior class advisor. So, um, as you know, we started this dance team in, uh, 2022, 2023. This summer, we attended the UDA dance camp. When we were part of that dance camp, the kids, uh, were taught intensive palm hip hop and command-based routines. Aleah Nunez, who is a junior in the auto collision shop, actually was named All-American dancer and was invited to participate in the 2025 Cheese at Citrus Bowl in Orlando, Florida.
Awesome.
And then, um, also sophomore student Skylar Freitas, who couldn't be with us tonight, um, she is in the health assisting shop. She was also named All-American dancer based on her performance. And Luciana Afanador Ferro, um, also won an award for being a precision command challenge winner. So after they had won those awards, they then performed routines that were taught to them. They were given a superior rating and we won a bid to nationals. So this is a, this competition, the national dance team challenge is really the Super Bowl of high school dance national competitions. It's seen worldwide. It's, it will, it will be aired on, it's partnered with ESPN and also on Varsity TV. Kids get scholarships for colleges by attending these championships and it's truly a once-in-a-lifetime, um, opportunity. Cause we may go to other camps and go to other competitions, but that doesn't necessarily mean that you would earn a bid to nationals. So, um, as Mr. Barton stated, we've been trying to raise funds since the summer, um, to, uh, be able to pay for these students to have this opportunity. Many of our dancers have never flown, never been on such a big stage. And, um, I, I brought them with me tonight so they could talk a little bit about what this opportunity means to them.
I think this is a really big opportunity for really the whole team because there are a lot of people on team who haven't been to Disney or if they were to go with their dance studio from outside of the school, then it would be a lot of money just on them and most kids are not able to afford it. And I just think that it's a big opportunity, especially for kids who want to get a scholarship at these places. And it's really watched like everywhere and it would just be a really big opportunity to get shown on how other dancers perform and it'll like teach the kids on our team how to be better and just learn more, um, skills.
Yeah, I agree with her and I think that in my case, I never took any dance classes before until I got here and I got the chance to join the dance team and, um, it's just like not real for me because I never thought I will be able to perform in such a huge event. And more if I came like two years ago to the United States. So it's just crazy to me and I would love to have that chance.
Awesome.
We appreciate you being here tonight. We're very proud of you, the whole entire team. And, uh, uh, we're going to ask the school committee for a vote to approve supporting the team to be able to attend the competition in Florida. And, uh, we'll ask for the vote first.
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Good luck, ladies.
So they are approving you and supporting you to go and we wish you the best of luck. If there's a channel, we can watch you on TV.
Yeah.
Please send it to us and we'll send it out to our school community so we can all be supporting you. And I know you'll do your best and that's all you can do and we're proud of you. So congratulations. So much. Thank you for talking to me.
We're very excited for you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
And that is the end of my agenda. I will be asking to go into executive session to discuss two options that are on the agenda.
Report to the business manager. Good? All right. Anything under old business? New business? Committee person motions? Subcommittee. All right.
Do we have to take a vote coming out of executive session?
Yes, we do.
Yes.
Okay.
So, uh, motion.
Two votes.
Huh?
Okay.
It would be two separate votes.
Yes.
I'll take a mo- make a motion and go on executive session.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we'll come back and, uh, take a couple of votes after we're done. Thank you, everybody.